They're not looking at me.
Good evening, everyone here and at home. We appreciate you being with us tonight as we begin our City of Fairview Board of Commissioners regular meeting, May 15th, 2025, at 7:17 PM. Ms. Jones, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Present.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Item number three, prayer and pledge. Dear Lord, I want to thank you so much for this wonderful community that we all serve. I want to ask you that we hear you and do what's best for our community and make the best decisions as we vote. Be with those who are sick and heal them and just be with each and every one of our students as they are about to either graduate, move on to their next chapter in life, or just be ready for summer activities. Keep everyone safe, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, mayor's comments. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. We just really appreciate each of you and love to hear what you have to say and value your comments for our meetings. Would everyone please make sure that their mics are on and we speak clearly and loudly into them so that the ones who are at home can hear? Thank you. And I want to thank our police officer for being here tonight, Officer Ray Martin, for watching out for us tonight. Thank you. Before we approve the agenda, I would like to ask the board that we add item 11E subdivision development agreement, Hatcher Heights subdivision, and item 11F subdivision development agreement, Timberbrook subdivision, per our planning department.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item five passes 5-0. Item six, citizens' comments.
There are three tonight, mayor. The first, Mr. Mitchell.
Hello, my name is Andrew Mitchell. I live at 7309 Buckhorn Court in Fairview, Tennessee. Mayor Anderson and Board of Commissioners. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for everything you do for Fairview. I know I'm supposed to come up here and complain that we just do not have enough subway restaurants in Fairview, but I'm going to save that for the next one that I come to. Tonight, I'm actually going to say good thanks. I want to publicly introduce myself to the board, ask for your consideration of my application for the Planning Commission. For the few of the upcoming open seats, I would like to have one of them if you so approve. My wife and I have been residents of Tennessee for a little over 12 years now, and that began with military service at Fort Campbell. And then we've just loved Tennessee and we've stuck around. I'm a combat-disabled veteran. I served tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. We have two school-aged children. We have third grader and a ninth grader. They're both active in their sports and their schools, one in baseball and the other one just made varsity cheer, which is pretty awesome. We moved here to Fairview for a better quality of life, and man, did we find it. This is a special place. The reason I want to serve this city is because when my kids are grown and they have families of their own in 10, 20 years from now, I want this to still be the best place to live in Tennessee that they choose to be at, and I'd like to be a part of making that happen. Over the years, we've lived all over Williamson County. I've lived in Thompson Station, Spring Hill, Franklin City, and the eastern unincorporated part of the county. So I understand the unique workings of each of the municipalities that we have here in Wilco. I've developed relationships with officials, both elected and unelected, all across the county. For direct experience to the Planning Commission, I grew up in an engineer's household. My dad was an engineer, and I learned the ways of redevelopment and home building all through my youth. I also worked for a real estate investment firm some years ago. I work closely with their planning and codes department, so I can read GIS, plat maps, top graphical maps, zoning maps, and solutions like Civic Plus, GeoCivics. I've used some of those in the past. I currently work in an IT field, so using any type of integrated document tech or other technology is not an issue for me. And then, actually, something I learned just recently, I live on a circle, but that circle is not a cul-de-sac, and I never knew there was more than one thing, but it's called a knuckle.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? A knuckle is more like a half-circle with two roads that come into it. And that's what I live on, not a cul-de-sac, so I'm telling you, I know my stuff, all right? Qualities that I see here that I think we should have on the commission. Mayor Anderson, I see you go out of your way to make sure that all citizens are well-informed and ivory voices heard. You always explain the decisions that the city makes from multiple points of view and perspectives, and I think people appreciate that. You understand that residents have concerns. You're able to connect with people on all levels, and I think we need more of that on the commission, and I also thank you for serving on that commission yourself.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor McDonald, I've watched you on each board, be willing to ask hard questions, dig deep into each proposal, which takes a lot of research for one, but it also takes a lot of courage to speak up. And that's definitely something that I've noticed since day one. I think that's vital to each commission, especially on the Planning Commission. Commissioner Hall, sir, you've served the city well. You embody the very fabric of the city, of who we are. I enjoy hearing the wisdom that you share, your dedication to keeping Fairview wonderful, and we absolutely should want that on all of our commissions. Commissioner Roberts, new voices on this board have been a very welcome addition to the city. You've been steadfast in championing what the citizens want, and I really admire that. The citizens have voiced that they want more people with diverse backgrounds and new ideas. I would love to bring some of that to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Buffalini, I've seen firsthand the deep love and commitment that you have for this city. Every time there's a need around town, I see you step up, lend a hand, or help in just in some way. It's that calling to always be in service to our community that people like us share from our past civil service. I've made strides in getting involved in our city in many ways. With your support as a board, I'm hoping that I can make one of those ways as being part of the Planning Commission. Lastly, I'll say to our city staff, Ethan Greer, Tom Doherty, and all the other staff are doing a lot with a little, and y'all are doing a fine job with the growth of this city. I commend you. So, thank you for listening to my TED Talk today. You all are doing such wonderful things for our city. Let's all keep up the good work, and let's keep Fairview great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Next is Goodman.
Hi, I'm Ray Goodman. I live in the city. I wanted just to thank everyone. They're working on new codes. I'm here to talk for some concerned city, concerned citizens of the Fairview for responsible development. Many of them could not attend, but asked me to talk and tell what they have on their minds to hopefully be considered for the new codes. The areas that they were wanting to include would be no clearcutting, leave as many matured trees as possible, no more high-density rentals of any kind, condos, townhomes, apartments. Fairview currently has more rentals than privately-owned detached homes. Under the new codes, you can tell someone what to do on their property, and that would really help when the new codes are passed. We'd like to see only aesthetic mixed design concepts with side-loading or rear-loading garages with a minimum of half-acre lots. Half-acre lots seem big, but when Williamson County's codes are one house per five acres, that's what's happening to Fairview. They're annexing into Fairview so they can avoid the Williamson County codes of one house for five acres. So it'd be nice to keep it, as a community, more homes. As we've talked about in Dakota Palooza, where people put in their time and their ideas, they were strongly against big commercial developments on Highway 100. They asked that they go to 840 or I-40 due to noise pollution and traffic congestion. Also, new developments should be required to put in their own turn lanes to help with traffic flow. Another area that was brought up was signage. Like to see more uniform signage to help with the better aesthetic in the community. And street lighting. New developments should provide proper streetlights. I think a lot of people were concerned about drainage and runoff from new developments. So going beyond the minimal requirements for drainage, if there's a possibility that there would be runoff or drainage onto the adjoining properties, go out, assess it, and go beyond the minimum so that this could help with the properties that are existing. Another big thing was they want to keep their streams clear and their creeks clear, and that seems to be an issue from runoff that's happening, and it's a concern for wildlife and trees and nature. So they want to see a lot of attention put into the runoff that's happening with the new developments. I know the schools are getting overcrowded. I've heard that kids are, some of them are sitting in hallways in the high school. So I don't know how much more we can take in our infrastructure until we can need to kind of slow and really think about what we want the city to look like. Love to see like a plan, even a three-dimensional, something where you see the city, you know, where you can tell what you're doing. When they were talking about the half-acre lots during Dakota Palooza, they talked about agrahoods. I think a lot of people are pro-agrahoods because it would be a beautiful way to do it, where you'd have, the homes would be close together, but then you'd have nature all around. So I think people were really pro-agrahood. I know the, we just think the community wants people to do the research. If you're on the Planning Commission or on the commission and you don't really know for sure about the property, go walk the property. If you don't know for sure, it's not a yes. It shouldn't be a yes. Make sure you do your research and think before you vote because there's a lot of people who are currently living here that will be affected with new development, and I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last, we have Ms. Eileen Brogan.
Good evening. I'm Eileen Brogan, 7106 Brush Creek Road South, and thank you for hearing my comments. I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of Bowie Park. At our last meeting, we talked about some concerns that people have had about siltation in Lake Byrd and Lake Anna in the park, and that gets fed pretty directly from the new development at Bowie Meadows. And I'm not an engineer. I don't know if there were measurements or if there's a way to measure siltation. We're not talking about volume of water. We're talking about volume of dirt. But you can see the difference in the lack of clarity in the water. It's, it looks pretty much like coffee. So, and I was just wondering if there was something that I, the city can do to test it or what? I know this is not a back-and-forth, but I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of that, and if there's anything that the Friends can do to help, you know, in terms of like maybe hiring an environmental engineer or something like that, we can, you know, try to get a grant or something like that for it. The other thing that we talked about was the bridge along the perimeter trail, and this has been something that we've been talking about for several years. I know that the last I heard, the engineering of it was supposed to be included with the engineering for the historical village. And again, the Friends are available to help in whatever way we can. We can apply for a grant, but we need to know what the costs are and all of that before we can apply for that. So just wanted to put those on your radar, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I am number seven, public announcements, awards, and recognition. Would that be you, Tom? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. We have a movie in the park this Saturday at Bowie Nature Park at 7:45. It's going to be, the movie will be Wild Robots. Fairview Elementary and Westwood Elementary have been invited. All children will be provided a free bag of popcorn, and this will be provided by Sturm Property Partners. Also, on June 7th is the fishing rodeo at Veterans Memorial Park. It will begin at 7:00 AM. Lunch will be provided for all participants, and prizes will be handed out by TWRA, and that is the events coming up shortly. Thank you.
Mr. Doherty, is there an age limit to that fishing rodeo that the public should know about?
I'm going to defer to Keith. I think there is an age limit, but I'm not sure what that age limit is.
And under, 16 and under?
Any questions on the fishing rodeo, reach out to the parks, Keith, or any, they should be able to answer any of those questions. I think they have the applications as well.
And what time again?
Starts at 7:00 AM.
Okay.
And I don't even know if you have to have an application. You may just show up, but anyway.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. I'm number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. City manager, Mr. Tom Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Just a few things. We have gotten, we were able to get a presentation from Pleasure AI before the May 29th Town Hall. He will be putting on a presentation and be able to answer questions at 6:00 PM. And the Town Hall, of course, will be at 7:00 PM. Also, wanted to remind everyone that we will be closed on May 29th for Memorial Day. I sent out an email prior to this meeting that we have a strategic planning session scheduled for Saturday, August 9th, from 9:00 to 2:00, with lunch being provided for participants. Board of Commissioners and staff involved. I also want to update on the due diligence for properties 2178 and 2188 Fairview Boulevard. We have received the reports from staff, and we have received the Phase 1 environmental. I'm going to email out all of them to you after this meeting, but the Phase 1, on page 25 says this assessment has revealed no evidence of any recognized environmental conditions in connection with the subject property, and it says basically the same thing on the next page under conclusions. So anyway, I'm going to defer questions to staff and our city attorney on any other questions, but pretty much what I take from these reports is it's a good, the property has no environmental issues as far as a purchase.
Let me make sure, so Memorial, you'll be closed Monday, the 26th, right?
Correct.
Okay. Monday, the 26th. And then what did you say about a get-together or something after?
Strategic planning on August 9th.
Okay.
9:00 to 2:00. That's a Saturday. And I guess, Curtis, if you just want to give a brief summary of yours, and Keith, if you don't give a brief summary, and if anybody has any questions, we'll go from there.
Put me on the spot, Tom. So I did a due diligence report for 2178 and 2188 Fairview Boulevard. Just evaluated these two parcels, and the intent, obviously, is to support initial event use and assess long-term civic development potential. The infrastructure summary consists of stormwater management, sanitary sewer, water supply, electric communications, sidewalks, and streetscapes, and all of these items were present. I can go into detail or provide any additional information. The topography and slopes. The site has a general rolling terrain. Grading is moderate over most of the two parcels, with gentle slopes on the west side, roughly 2% to 5%, and then a natural drainage swell that exists between the two properties. Where that drainage swell exists would be the greatest slopes, 15% to 20% based off a survey. And then the soils, just did a quick USGS websoil survey. No, these aren't, these aren't exact, but they provide a pretty good overview. The drainage class was classified as well-drained, moderate permeability, low shrink swell potential. This basically just means that, you know, there's a good bearing capacity and minimal seasonal water logging, favorable for foundations and pavement. So nothing of concern from what I saw. The soil condition was graded B, so it goes A, B, C, D, F. So that's a good sign. And then I kind of skipped through what I just talked about, suitability of the site. I don't know the exact purpose of this parcel, but, you know, with all the utilities that are in place, it appears that no major extensions are required. Obviously, if something very specific comes along, there may be something that need to be, need to occur. And then there is a onsite detention, underground stormwater tank. Obviously, that is, it is a plus, but it also can be a negative depending on the condition of it, but that's something we can assess in the future. But in summary, it's believed that this site is strategically positioned and substantially development-ready. Utilities approvals and proximity to civic campus, significantly reduced infrastructure burdens. But the provided standard civil engineering steps are followed, surveys, utility capacity checks, grading, design, geotech study, all those things can come into play when we decide what we plan to do with the parcel. That concludes my due diligence report. The planning side of that, looking at the contract and the financial piece of it, there are several encumbrances upon the properties. Contractually, it is for the seller to clear those encumbrances. They have some different financial things tied up with that prior to closing that they need to clear. The land use is currently zoned Main Street mixed-use. It lies within our Town Center overlay district, and so it would fall within a Main Street mixed-use project similar to a city center. It would continue on and be able to be zoned in the same way as city center is so that we have several variability, quite a bit of variability and options from the city on what we can or can build there. A couple recommendations were to obtain an updated title commitment after the seller pays off and closes out their encumbrances, and then to resurvey on the closing to get a clean and clear survey of the property. And then, in summary, the 2178 and 2188 Fairview Boulevard site is zoned appropriate for the intended use by the City of Fairview. There are no conditions that exist that prohibit the City of Fairview from obtaining this property and constructing a project on this site, contractual language, and then what was discovered or not discovered really in the Phase 1.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes.
All that being said, what is the overall impact on the closing, prospective closing date? Is that, I'm assuming that's moved with, it sounds like?
We're ready to close on the 21st. The sellers have to get ready to close on the 21st, too. Ethan spoke a lot, but basically, they owe money on their property and they have to pay it off, and it seems be they may owe more on the property than they're selling it for because it's cross-collateralized with other assets they own, which is not unusual for commercial property owners. So that's their problem to figure out. So we hope to close on the 21st if they can satisfy their creditors and may get pushed back if that takes them a little bit longer. It wouldn't surprise me if it gets pushed towards the end of the month, but we're ready to close on the 21st. It's scheduled to close on the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm number nine, consent agenda, A, minutes from May 1st, 2025, Board of Commissioners regular meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. I'm number nine, passes 5-0. I'm number 10, old business, A, rezoning 7711 Horn Tavern Road. I will now open the public hearing. Ms. Pack, are you just up here to answer questions, or do you want to make a comment?
If I can answer, yes. He couldn't be here today, so.
Okay. If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Beth Pack, 7707 Horn Tavern, Fairview.
Okay. I will close the public hearing. 10A2, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning a 2.2 plus or minus acre portion of the 5.60 plus or minus acre parcel located at 7711 Horn Tavern Road, consisting of Williamson County tax map 022, parcel 136.00, from RS40, single-family residential, to R20, one- and two-family residential, property owner Jeff Pack. Mr. Greer?
Tonight is the second and final read of this property. Mr. Pack has submitted to the city to rezone from RS40 to R20 to better suit the property. He has expressed interest in building two single-family homes. This came to you with a positive recommendation from the Board of Commissioners, or from the Planning Commission to the Board of Commissioners, and it meets the 2040 comprehensive plan for being zoned RS, or R20. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10A1 and 2, passes 5-0. Thank you. Item 10B, annexation, Zero Cro-Cut Road. I will now open the public hearing.
I will close the public hearing. Item 10B2, Resolution 2025, A Resolution to Annex Certain Territory Upon Written Consent of the Owner and to Incorporate the Same Within the Boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee With RS40 Single Family Residential Zoning, Map 018, Parcel 031.00, Zero Crowcut Road, 28.75 Plus or Minus Acres, Owner Vaden North Cut. Mr. Greer.
Mr. Tim Mangrum submitted this project to the City of Fairview. This comes to the Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation. This property is located within the urban growth boundary of the city. It is also contiguous with a municipal property. And so the RS40 zoning is what this property would come in as. Mr. Mangrum also has a subsequent request to rezone this property to RS15. You will hear that request at your next meeting. But as far as the annexation goes, it is within our urban growth boundary. It is contiguous with the municipality and it is within our 2040 Comp Plan. Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10B2, passes five zero. Item 10C, Second and Final Reading, Ordinance 2025-08, An Ordinance for an Amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget. City Manager Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. This appropriates money for a property acquisition.
I'll entertain a motion and then we can make, we can have more discussion.
Motion to approve Ordinance 2025-08.
Second.
All right, discussion from the board and if we want to continue our...
This is, this is for amended.
Sorry. Yeah, we'll continue that on 11, yeah, 11C.
So just as a reminder from what we talked about in the first reading, this is just to add to the current fiscal budget so that we can purchase properties that we've been discussing at the meetings.
Correct.
Great.
I didn't mean to confuse anyone. This is the amended for the properties and we'll discuss the rest of our fiscal 26 budget at item 11C.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify this, this is to approve the amended budget for $3.3 million. This doesn't, we're not voting to approve the purchase of these. Is this what this is right now?
Yes.
I have a question then in regards to the values of certain properties. Is this the time to ask those questions?
This is a point of order. The approval to purchase the properties has already been passed.
But this is the property we're closing on the 21st. So if it's not approved, then the city'd be in default of the contract.
But this, the 3.3 million is including all three properties, correct?
It's, it's not, it's not the approval, it's not the approval of the...
It's not the approval of the jewel?
Just to amend the budget to...
Amen the budget to have the money ready.
Yeah, there's, that, that still hasn't been approved and there's not, not an agreement on price and there likely won't be at this point.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11C, passes five zero.
I'm sorry, 11, I'm, I'm confusing everybody. Item 10C, passes five zero. Item 11, New Business, 11A, Resolution 26-25, A Resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee Designating Certain Items as Surplus and Authorizing Their Disposal. Mr. Darty, are you going to speak on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Board. We've got several LISO items and I just wanted to affirm that, that there's several firearm items on here as well. Those will not be sold. Those are going to be used as trade-ins on additional firearm equipment for the police department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A, passes five zero. Item 11B, Resolution 27-25, A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee For Belvoir Subdivision, Phase 1B.
Mr. Broadbent?
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, subdivision development agreement, it's a standard document we go through. It is going to be for Belvoir Subdivision, Phase 1B, consisting of 10 residential lots. The, there will be a site performance bond in the amount of $86,220.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 2725.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B, passes five zero. Item 11C, Ordinance 2025-09, An Ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee Adopting the Annual Budget and Tax Rate for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1st, 2025 and Ending June 30th, 2026. City Manager Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. You'll bear with me, we'll, we'll go through parks and then a couple of items and then what I want to emphasize too is this is, this is a first read. The goal is to get every, the goal for the state is for every municipality to adopt a budget before June 30th. So we're, we're, we're doing good, getting started early. I want to emphasize that we have a three-week period between first read and second read. So, you know, we've got, we've got opportunities to make changes, do some adjustments, talk, but just realize this got to go through two readings and there will be a public hearing before the second read. With that being said, I'm going to go into parks. There's, there's been quite a bit of change in parks as far as the structure of their budget. As most of you know, there's been a, the building permits, this is going, this will be the second full year that building permits, a portion of those revenues are going into the park designated to and committed to parks. So we are anticipating a pretty hefty revenue outline item. We have moved quite a few expenditures, if you look on page 20, quite a few expenditure line items into that building permit revenue category. So you see the 259,700 that is, that is going in. So it's, it's good for the park, their machinery and equipment and they, they're going to be able to get some stuff, needed things there. They, they need a additional vehicle, be able to get that. So it, going back to the operating side, a lot of the negatives you see are coming out of there and going straight into here. So, bond, we've added some, some expenditures out of there. Also, we've put some funds coming out of the tree bank. We've got Highway 100 Cloverleaf Project. I'm not as sure exactly how much that'll be. We, we probably can save some money if we can figure out, coordinate labor through city staff. We've also just put in a 25,000. If something comes up, we need landscape, if the money's appropriated there as well. That is about it. Keith is available, but we're really excited about the park. We've been able to add another employee, another naturalist, this, this budget. And so they, they've got a, puts them at six full-time employees and, and, you know, I believe once we get to seven or eight, that'll, that'll be a good holding point for, for a while. But anyway, any questions?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Does Justin have any help now?
Yes, there, there's, there are two. We will be looking to add one more. If not with amended budget in the next year's budget. But there are two that are in the maintenance department currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Darty, I'd like to look at on page 20 under bonds. I see $100,000 allocated for the Bowie Park Perimeter Trail Bridge. Coming out of the bond money, we heard during citizens' comments from Ms. Eileen Brogan, questions just about the engineering for that being tied into the Historic Village. And I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe you can help explain to us maybe a little bit of history of that and then what the 100,000 is going to do and, and what's the plan in this fiscal for allocating these funds?
We, we are in the preliminary, we, we have turned it over. They, they're working on it and as an addendum, work order from the Historical Village. We're going back and forth between the idea of putting in a bridge or putting in a low-water crossway with culverts and some type of cement fixture for people to go across that way that may be the, the safest in the long run. But we're going to bring to the board some options and give you our, our recommendation. I think that this is a high number for that project, but I didn't want to undershoot. Did that answer your question?
When you say they are looking at it, who is, who?
I'm sorry, Kim Lee Horn.
So the same group that's doing Historical Village? It's the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Darty, I was curious as to, do we have any scheduling as far as timeline for any of this happening? And do you have any updates on the Historic Village? And is that part of this bond as well?
Yes, that most, most of the planning for Historical Village is pretty much complete. We're about ready to bring to the board a couple of options that, that we feel like will meet our needs. We're right now coordinating funding options that we are not totally nailed down yet. So just as soon as we can get those nailed down, we'll be, that'll be coming to you and it'll be in the near future.
Okay, another question?
I would say, I would say if not by the end of this fiscal year, early, early July, but probably, I would, I would be surprised if it's not in June.
Okay. Also, you have for parks, the revenue going from 128 to 293 and facilities going from 352 to 798 for revenue. Where's that revenue coming from? Is that? Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Could you tell me a page until you, I guess you're talking about, yeah, give me a page number?
The line item would help.
Is it, are you talking about in the revenue line?
In the revenue, yes.
Page two, I believe.
This is all building permit revenue for the parks. They get, they're getting 16%.
Right.
And the general fund gets 42% and then facilities gets 42%.
Okay.
So that's the projection of, a conservative projection of what we feel like building permits are going to bring in this year.
So, okay, honestly, thank you.
Does that?
Yeah, no, it's, thank you.
Mr. Darty, I have a couple of questions. First one is the Park Playground Project Bond Money, 100,000. Is that simply just to address the repairs and just overall maintenance that's needed at that playground?
It was originally for some shading and a pavilion for people to eat where they didn't have to be eating inside of the park. We're going to have to, as we're looking at the mulch conundrum, we're, we're looking at a lot of options and we will be bringing you two or three, pick your poison options. The, we're going to look at the long-term, what makes the most feasible financial decision over time. And, you know, it's, until I got into this, I had no idea how expensive the park business is. But we're, we're hopefully going to have some information to you shortly as well on that. We're, we're making, making, making some strides and getting some, getting some numbers and hopefully we can get that to you pretty quickly.
That's a decent segue into my next question. So as Commissioner Buffalini pointed out, the revenue that the park generates primarily from permitting is 293,000, yet the overall cost to operate the park system in town is, if I'm reading this correctly, is just over 1.2 million this year. With total, total general fund expenditures is overall on page 20.
Yes, that's included in the bond, including the tree bank.
Yeah.
Including park, the, the part that's coming into the park. So, you know, if you look at, let's go to page 19, I guess. What's coming out of the general fund is pretty much that 51010.
So with the help of the permits, that line item is roughly 50% covered, a little bit more with the revenue that's generated.
Which, which line item, I guess that again?
Just the overall 510,000 that you pointed out from the...
Well, that, no, that's, that's going to be, that's covering the personnel and then $36,000 of operating. The personnel for the park is 473,700 and then the operating out of general fund is 36,310, which gives you the 51010. And then we're putting out of the building permit revenue that's coming into parks, these other areas like repair and maintenance vehicles, park trail maintenance, lake maintenance coming out of, of the building permits donated, that's going to the parks. So I guess you'd add 51010 to the 259,700 and that's, that's your operating. 76770?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to point out that it is, is, it's frustrating, the condition of some of the different areas of parks around the community to, we all know that, we've talked about it. I guess it's just when you look at the numbers, it's, it's, I guess just the takeaway is that the parks aren't cheap, right? They, they're very expensive to maintain and keep going and doing our best to add, to add the permitting fees to, to help fund that, but just wanting to call that out and point it out. But, um, just wanting to call that out and point it out.
Yes, and the, the tree bank, you know, we can do any, you know, landscaping, um, with those funds. Now, that's, that's a very sporadic revenue. I mean, it very, we'll go years where we don't have any and then one year we might have half a million. And then, you know, it's just, it's sporadic.
Of, of the, um, of the overall budget for the park system this year, it's increased obviously quite a bit. There's a lot of one-time purchases included in that. Do you foresee that going back down once those projects are done? I would imagine so.
Yes, on the, on the capital expenditures especially, um, a lot of the operating should gradually increase, just like the rest, as we increase services, the operating should increase. But, you know, you, depending on needs on the capital side and, and, and what resources we have available, the, it, it, they should go down on the, the one-time expenditures.
I've got a, a question for Mr. Doherty. Um, Vice Mayor, you, were you finished? Okay, thank you. Um, and Mr. Paisley also, please. So, um, you know, to, to the point that I think Vice Mayor McDonald was making is the park is expensive to run and it doesn't, on its face, appear to generate a lot of revenue. I, um, wasn't asked to, but to counter that a little bit with all of the, um, events that we have and the traffic that the park brings, specifically Bowie Park, to the city. I would say that we probably see some of our sales tax, um, paid back into the city budget with the people that are drawn to the city to visit our parks. And, um, and some of the, the events that happen at the park probably generate some revenue as well. So I think there are probably some unseen revenue generating pieces that the city benefits from that don't directly show into the park. And I don't know how we can measure that. I imagine there's a way and that would actually be kind of a great exercise to see at some point if there is any sort of a way to measure, uh, it spike in, say like sales tax or something on the day of. Is, is there something?
I said placer AI.
Placer, oh, yeah. All my hopes and dreams will come into fruition with placer AI. Um, but, but now my question. My question is, with some of these capital projects specifically, have we ever looked into getting grants to cover some of the costs of park improvements so that we aren't dipping into our budget? Do we know, are there grants available to help? I would imagine this is one of those areas where there is some government funding that would help.
There is, um, the trick with some of that, some of our grants that we, um, went after before kind of flagged us because we turned them back in. So it's, it's been a little bit, so, um, that is one thing we're trying to look into and accomplish.
And when you say we turned them back in, what does that mean?
We actually received a grant, um, actually two grants. Not sure which ones they were, but we didn't have enough money to do our portion of that grant.
And so we didn't spend the money and it ended up going back? And that is, that doesn't look very good for the.
Right.
Organization or entity.
That one flags you and you get put at the back of the stack, so.
Yeah, does that flag go away after a certain period of time?
I think if we do it properly and, and show, um, that we have the money in the budget to do so, yes. And it, and that particular one, things kept getting added to it.
Yeah. So have we, have we tried in, I don't know when this happened. Have we tried in recent years? Have we considered for any of the work that we're doing now?
It's, uh, talking with, um, some of the playground companies, um, there are some, uh, grants out there. LPRF is a big one. Parks usually use for going after, uh, grants. So.
What about for like the bridge? Are there grants to help with things like that, that maybe are more like general park? Not, not playground, but, but outside of the playground?
I'm not sure particularly in that. I, I do know there are grants out there for exercise equipment. That is another big thing happening around. We're, we're looking at that option too, um, because I do know a commissioner asked me to do so and I've been doing research on those two.
Thank you.
And just to give you a little bit of history, um, we hadn't done a lot of grant work since I've been here. Well, I did a lot of cleaning up grants when I got here. But, you know, it, the park, the park department went almost away right around the COVID. And, and anyway, we've been building up. So, you know, when, you know, some of the things come about and we have some bond money, trying to get some of these things done, uh, if you, you know, some of these grants, if you can show you got the funds and do it, one thing we have on our favor is, is our park master plan. And there's several things that, that will give a, give us a better chance to be in line. But it's, um, to be quite honest, we've been getting on our feet, um, since, really since COVID. Um, so it's, it's just, um, going from like, I don't know how many you had, two, three employees, two?
Two and a half.
Two, okay. So I mean, there for a while, it was just, it was just nothing. So we're, we're, we're moving forward.
We're building back up. And, and just one last question. Do we lean into like partnerships? Um, like can the Friends of Bowie Park help with covering costs of things? Or, um, is that something that we have a?
Well, the way, the way we have to deal with, with any money coming in is has to be a donation to the city. Uh, then we have to, since we're liable and we're responsible, we have to, we have to take full responsibility.
And Mr. Paisley, what were you going to say?
They, they have, um, just recently with the storybook trail, um, they wrote a grant, um, and donated, uh, forty-two hundred dollars towards that. So that, we're using that to, to cover that cost. But a lot of their, their mission statement states that their, I believe their, um, money they raised and stuff should be going towards, uh, helping with the programming. And they also gave us, um, donation to help with, um, children with summer camps. And they gave us seventeen hundred and I believe fifty dollars for, um, that purpose.
You said for the summer camps?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And I'm, I'm going to ask you the question I've been asking some of the other department heads. If you had a magic wand, if you, you know, what, what would be your big vision? What would be the thing you'd really like to have?
Well, it's going to be the same answer as every other department. Um, personnel is always, uh, key.
Yeah.
Being able to accomplish more. I mean, currently we have, um, I, uh, maintenance supervisor is doing all the mowing and stuff in Bowie. While the other maintenance guy, Levi, is actually on the trail system. So we have them split up, so they're both trying to accomplish, um, what they can.
Yeah, I've seen them out there, they're working pretty hard. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, I have one question, question. Um, Tom, you mentioned something about a pavilion a while ago and about not being able to eat in Bowie Park. Did you mean that to be in the playground itself?
Yes, that's, that's what I meant, in, inside the playground. Uh, a lot, there's a lot of concern for attracting bees and insects and, and such inside the playground area. And so we were just trying to get an area where people could carry food outside of the play, playground area.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to get you to correct it. And I might say this about, I asked a while ago about, uh, helping the, um, uh, maintenance. And basically I was asking that so you could be a director rather than a grass cutter. So that was my reason for asking that. So, anyway, hopefully you can get enough eventually to, where you won't have to be out there on the maintenance team, so to speak, so.
I'd, I'd be happy to get past the playground. I haven't been past the playground on the trail system and.
Yeah, good.
Except for when a storm comes.
Right, okay. Anyway, I just was looking at for, you've got enough on your plate to handle the directorship. So I just want to, if it was a, a wish that you might want, I was hoping that it would be maintenance. Thank you.
Anything else on parks?
Nope, good.
We've got a lot going on with parks and then I'm, I'm excited about it. If you'll go to page twenty-one, I just want to go over these briefly. Uh, I know spreadsheets drive people crazy, but it's my life. If you look down, this is called, this, I call it my expenditure reconcili- reconciliation, uh, spreadsheet. If you look down, you see all the departments. Uh, if you go, uh, down at the very bottom in personnel, um, you know, you can see that fifty-nine, um, percent of our costs, almost sixty percent of our total costs in general are, is, uh, comes from personnel, thirty percent in operating. Uh, this year, uh, less than one percent in capital. And then, uh, uh, two percent in the park, that's the building permits. Um, and then, uh, thirty-one point three-one percent in tree bank. And then, uh, if you, all of our debt services and facilities, that's, uh, six point four percent of the general fund budget. So you see the general fund budget and then you go on down, you can see the rest. But if you look at the far end, it does, uh, percentage of the budget by department. And at the bottom is percentage of the budget by, uh, category, whether personnel, operating or something like that. Or you can, you can look at it as a percentage, uh, uh, but I, I just, I wanted you to see that. So if, you know, you ever wonder, well, how much of the budget does the police department take? Or how much of the budget does admin take? Uh, it's a quick, easy reference. Uh, and then the next on page twenty-two is, uh, estimated, uh, beginning and ending balances. Uh, you've got operating and capital, um, and then, um, you've got parks, tree bank, facility, reserves, bond, total general fund, and then you've got, uh, street aid, drug fund and ARPA. Uh, if you wonder, if you ever get a lookin' around and you don't see any ARPA money in the, uh, our auditors have, have, uh, accounted for that in our liability. And so once we, uh, once we do our ARPA accounting through them, that liability will go away. But it has not been showing up in our fund balance. So if anybody ever asks that, that's, it's not in there. But those, I just wanted y'all to be aware, you know, the goal every year is to try to be in the black a little bit, you know, it's not bad. Now this, you know, you gotta, you gotta realize a lot of, you know, the, the bond money you gotta spend. So you're going to be in, it's going to look like you're in the deficit, but you know, it's just, you, you want to know, you want to know, hey, I'm in the black in operating, I'm in the black in other areas. And then, you know, you, so the big overall, it looks like, yeah, we might be five, six million in the red this year, but, you know, most of that would be, um, uh, bond money or ARPA money. So, anyway, just, just to keep that in mind. Um, with that being said, that's about all I wanted to go over with the budget. We can discuss anything. Probably what we need to do is, um, any changes y'all know you want to make, right now would be a good time to, to discuss them. And, uh, I, I can, I can try to make those changes, uh, before the second read. We also have three weeks between now and then, we can discuss. I can email, but, you know, between and get your ideas. Just remember, do not reply all, um, just, just tell me your thoughts and I will, I will compile each in everybody's thoughts on, 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 on a particular topic. Uh, anything that we can decide tonight, we can decide tonight. Um, you know, it's, it's really just, um, a working document that, you know, it's, it's our best laid plan. Stuff happens. So you just, you just, uh, got to be, try to be ready for that. One thing I also want to talk about is, is we've got a very healthy cash balance right now. And as we, one of the main reasons, one of the big reasons for, uh, investment in economic development is, is seeking, um, grants and, and, and those type opportunities. And, um, you know, it, well, most of those grants, they don't just give you money. You, you, you have to buy it or you have to spend the money and then get reimbursed. So to keep, to be able to really utilize grants, you really need to have a strong cash position. Because, you know, if you have a three, four hundred thousand dollar outlay, you need to be able to front it till you, till they reimburse you, uh, thirty to sixty days later. So anyway, just keep that in mind as we're looking at this. We look at a lot of things like timing, you know, how can we do without this money for this amount of time? Uh, you know, so the, you know, I feel like we're at a good spot in our, in our cash, uh, cash position. And I really would like to keep it about where it is, just for that purpose. And I will, um, hush and let y'all fire it, uh, talk to me.
Okay, so I would like to, um, talk about our, um, tax rate for the fiscal year. So last Tuesday, I was at, um, our economic, monthly economic development meeting. And, um, County Mayor Rogers Anderson received from Brad Coleman the, um, revenue, uh, neutral rate for the City of Fairview, which is point nine oh four. And point, sorry, point five nine oh four. And, yeah, not point nine, huh, point five nine oh four. And, um, as has been established, um, in, in the past, it has been decided to, uh, go above that rate. Well, actually what, um, Mr. Doherty and, uh, Mr. Knox worked on was being able to put together a budget so that our community will benefit from the fact that he is seeking for us to stay revenue neutral, which means that our, um, our tax rate is not raised up to, since we are in the year that we are seeing that the county is, uh, doing, um, reassessments on the properties and houses. So despite what I have seen on social media, uh, talking about how the city's raising your taxes, that's not the fact. The fact is, every three to five years, Williamson County does a reassessment on property values, which is just commonplace. That happens, the reassessment, if your property goes up, your property taxes go up. That has nothing to do with the City of Fairview. What has to do with the City of Fairview is our, uh, revenue rate and whether we decide as a board, um, which, you know, our city manager suggests, um, we have just, you know, we, we vote on this to stay neutral, which means when the property taxes go up because of the reassessment of properties and them possibly going up, which we all know, if you sell your house right now, uh, in the City of Fairview, you're, unless it's a brand new house, you're going to see, um, you know, and a, a big increase on the value and what you can get for your house. So every three to five years, when they do that reassessment to, um, you know, realign the, uh, property taxes, we choose if we're going to stay revenue neutral. So with our, um, city manager suggesting because of our healthy budget to stay revenue neutral, that means for our taxpayers in the City of Fairview that your property taxes, according to your assessment, will go up. But actually, the revenue that was being charged in Fairview is actually going back down to neutral. So what that means is that you're, you should not see a significant raise in your property taxes, unless you had a property that was older and took a big jump. Because if you've bought anything recently or your property stayed about the same, then your property taxes should not go up, uh, that much. So, and with that being said, most of the other cities, because we were in the meeting with all the other cities, most of the other cities are deciding to go above revenue neutral and raise taxes in their cities. And I do want to say, and if anybody on social media says anything different, that is not, that's not the case, that we are staying revenue neutral, which means the City of Fairview is not raising our city's taxes. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Tom, for all the work you've done and how hard you've worked on our budget to make sure our citizens will realize, uh, no tax increase from the City of Fairview.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, in fact, we're actually, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're lowering the city's tax rate percentage or the, the rate itself to adjust with the value increase to where, we're not keeping the tax rate where it was. It's actually gonna be lower, correct? Cause it, what is it currently?
Yes, the, the tax rate went from, uh, point eight seven six five to the revenue neutral, which all that means is it should provide the same amount of revenue as the old tax rate did with the old, um, appra, assessment. With the new assessment to provide the same revenue, the, the certified tax rate is point five nine oh four. So any increase we see in our property tax revenue this year will not because of, of increased rate, it will be because there's more properties in the system that is getting taxed.
Correct, yeah. And that doesn't mean that your property taxes aren't influenced by other factors, but what the city controls.
Right, and, and, and the mayor, the mayor touched on it. If you've got a, if you've got a piece of property that just jumped on its value, you're gonna have a higher, you, you might see more. But if your value stays close to the same, or you might even have less if you're, if you didn't have as big of a, uh, adjustment. And for the city as a whole, our, our property, our, our property increased by forty, in value by forty-four percent. But say if yours only increased by twenty-five, you're not, you know, or if, if yours increased by sixty, you're gonna pay more. If yours increased by twenty-five, you're gonna pay less. So, it, but overall, it's gonna be, uh, it should be revenue neutral.
Yeah, for the longest time, and I think we still technically are, right, the highest tax rate in the county. But we've been by a long shot and I, we're real close to not being, holding that, that, that seat anymore, which is nice, but not quite there, but we're getting there.
It's nice, but it's a little misleading when you look at the property values.
Well, yes, yeah, there's a reason for it. There, the, the reason we were as high as we were for the longest time is because our property values are much lower than the majority of the county. But we're start, it's start, starting to show that we're catching up, um, property value wise, which is allowing us to lower that tax rate to not take the top spot every year. Still not there, but getting close.
I heard in our work, work session, you know, um, adding a person in, um, in, um, Public Works Department and, and I'm, I'm, I, I know every department needs more personnel. In fact, I think most of them asked for at least one, except for, um, admin and, um, finance and court. And I think, I think, um, you know, if, as, as a city manager trying to be, trying to be fair and equitable, and knowing that, how hard that position is to feel and knowing that, you know, we, we have failed in the last, I guess, the last hire we made is still with us, but we failed in the previous four or five. They, they, they didn't stay with the city, um, more than six months. So it's, it's, it's a difficult, difficult. So I'm very open, but I would like to watch revenue and come back to y'all around the hall later and say, hey, it's kicking, let's, let's, let's address some of these issues. But if the board so chooses and y'all want me to put one in, uh, I can put it in. I think, uh, you know, we've got a, a, an overage of, uh, eighty-eight, eighty-nine thousand right now. That would drop it by approximately forty-three, forty-four thousand dollars. To me, I have a hard time doing that when I know other folks need it too. So that, that's kind of where I, I'm at on that. And as far as the, the placere AI, um, you know, we, those are the two things that, that kind of jumped out at me most in our talks. You know, if, 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 uh, I think it's gonna open a lot of doors for us, I think it's gonna be an opportunity. But I also understand the, um, I'm, I'm the same way. I'm, I'm old school, I don't, I don't trust, I don't, I don't wanna, you know. But at the same time, I think after you watch this and have a chance to ask questions, I think it may, you may see the benefit. If we don't, we don't have to get it, but it, it's something that we see value in. So, um, I don't, I, I don't, uh, those two, uh, those two issues do not bother me a bit. So, you know, whatever the board wants to do, and even if it's in the budget, there's still a contract has to be signed and y'all have to vote on that. So it's, it's not like you're saying we can have it, even if, even if it's in the budget. And there's a lot of things in there that probably won't be spent, uh, as we go through items. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to adjust and, and, and move and redo. But I feel really good about this budget and any, if there's any changes. Uh, if y'all make a decision right now and y'all come to an agreement, y'all got some changes you want me to make, I'll, I'll make note of it and have it in the, in the second read. If, um, if, if you're good with it, um, we'll keep it and, and go.
Mr. Darty?
Yes.
Just to that point about the additional position in public works, you've said several times during these work sessions, Tuesday and today, that we probably won't spend that much, probably went over that much. If we just notched down some of those categories a little bit and thought about adding that additional position, I'm thinking of basic safety issues when we're talking about men that are operating equipment that can be pretty dangerous. And the, the levels of exhaustion as our city grows and wearing them out. I think, I mean, this is where I'm thinking, we probably could take a look at some of those places where you are pretty certain that you're overshooting in the budget and find something for another position when, and look out for this department that I think operates very lean. And to the, the point of placere AI, I, I actually am not sold on keeping that in this budget for this year because it seems to me like it's a tool that requires some forethought about how you would even use the data and what you would do with it. And I don't see that in a plan coming forth from anybody on, just the knowledge on what to do with that amount of information. And so I know you mentioned they're going to give us a demo, but like I said in our session on Tuesday, having a, a sales pitch from a company is one thing, but I would like to hear the city staff tell me how they plan to use this and what they're going to do. We're, we're paying a bill for fifteen thousand dollars for it. I'd like to know on day one, what the plan of action is for that and how you plan on incorporating it into what the city is doing and how that's going to result in some revenue. Already in, uh, economic development, we spend money on salary, vehicle. Now we're looking at placere AI and we're dropping a lot of money into this one area. And I don't think the board has yet heard a plan on how any of this is going to actually go into an articulated series of steps to work on an economic development plan for the city of Fairview. So that, that's kind of a mouthful, but I mean, that, those are the edits I would like right off the top is where can we cut back on some of those places that you know you're overshooting to help out a department that we've kind of, I don't think all agreed, but I haven't heard any arguments against it, needs another position. I know everybody does, I know that, that's across the board. But then also for this software that is a powerful tool, but AI doesn't have to cost a lot of money. What's the plan for that? It's fifteen thousand, you cut that, that gives you fifteen thousand towards a person that can be out there helping Todd Bratcher and his camp. That's just my, my thoughts on it.
So are we looking at about twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand for the, a salary for an employee with Public Works?
Um, I'll tell you, tell you precisely real quick, but, um, I would say more like about forty-three, forty-four, somewhere in that range.
That would be, okay, but that would be everything. Salary wise, it'd be twenty-six to twenty-eight.
No, no, salary would be forty, we're in the forties.
Okay, that wasn't what I was told in a meeting with, okay.
Um, if you look on, uh, I'll have to find it real quick.
I asked that very question, that was the number I was given. So if I'm incorrect, then let's take a look at that.
Who gave it to you?
It wasn't you.
Okay.
There, I think I have the, the solution. I have the solution. He's got seventy-five thousand dollars down for the cloverleaf. I think you can hire an employee there and we'll still have ample money for that seventy-five thousand dollars to take care of the cloverleaf.
Is the cloverleaf bond money, though?
Uh, the cloverleaf, that's, um, that's, that's out of Tree Bank.
And that's out of the Tree Bank.
So we couldn't, you couldn't hire anybody because of, in the Tree Bank, right?
No, that's, that's for landscaping.
Okay. Thought I had the issue solved.
Thank you for your innovation.
On page twenty-three of that budget, you have maintenance crew member annual salary at forty-one thousand six sixty-four.
Yeah, forty-one, six sixty-four. And yeah, the only other increase, you know, increases is, is, uh, their retirement and, and the health insurance and stuff like that. But, um, you know, it, it's, it's, um, I've, I've got that in my notes and, um, I've got the other in my notes as well. I would like to hear, um, I can cancel, if, if the board's a hundred percent on the, on the placere AI, I can cancel that demo, um, and not, and cancel the, the work session. If, if it's, you know, if it's just a done deal, we, we can, we can move forward on that.
Mayor?
Yes?
I, I think it's still a good idea to, to listen to their pitch regardless, just to hear. But I, I want to echo what Commissioner Roberts said, and that's kind of what I said earlier as well, is there's so many items on here that we may or may not use, where we will use another employee for Public Works. So that, that was some of the things that I mentioned earlier in the workshop, uh, work session that I would like to.
And I, it will be in the second read.
Thank you.
If I may, I, I absolutely want to see that department get another employee as well. But I do think there's a little danger in assuming that we're not gonna use the money that's budgeted. I, I just, worst case scenario, you use everything that you have budgeted and you're, you find yourself, and, and we've talked about this, Tom, the reason you build your budget the way you do is because you're, you don't want to find yourself in that situation, right? So I don't, I, as much as I, I would, I would love to be able to find the money by saying, we don't need this versus just saying, we may be able to get away with spending less on this, if that makes sense.
I have to go back to when I started the wish list, we were one point three in the negative. The, the, the numbers I brought to you tonight were eighty-eight thousand in the black. So we, we went through it pretty tough. Uh, when I had several meetings with department heads and we're not, I, I don't, I didn't mean to give anybody the impression that, oh, we're probably not gonna, you know, some of those line items, I think were in bond and doesn't, doesn't really even affect operations. So let me reiterate, these have been combed pretty thoroughly with me and the department heads. Uh, they, they're, they're, they're comfortable with it, they can, they can function with it. And realize that, you know, we, we, sometimes money doesn't come in like you anticipate or think it's going to. Now, this, this position's not gonna throw us in the bank and we've got a strong cash position. Uh, we can, we can go in the red for a while and be okay, but I, I don't think that's, that's best practice.
I would agree. I, well, I think like, as, uh, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Buflini alluded to, placere AI is, you know, it's a, it's a luxury item at the end of the day. Do I think we could use it one day? Sure. Do I think we could somewhat use it now? Probably. But to Commissioner Roberts' point, I agree with her a hundred percent. I have not heard any sort of ROI game plan on that technology to where we will offset it. I think for me, it's a, it's a very, it's a in the moment and looking backwards technology that allows you, you can then build predictions. But, um, you, you're still gonna need forward-thinking models that AI, I don't think can effectively address to where it's gonna offset any expenses that come with that, with new development and stuff. Yes, it shows you numbers and traffic flows and demographic counts on where things are coming from. But at the end of the day, that's just all backwards-looking, um, understanding the reality. But it doesn't tell us, you know, it's not gonna predict traffic flows on a new development that hasn't been built yet or even designed. So for me, I think, I think that's, as much as the argument can be made that there is a positive use that could come from that, I think we could easily say that now is probably not the best time and that's fifteen thousand dollars towards a forty-three thousand dollar salary. Unless, you know, and to Commissioner Buflini's point, I think it's still a good idea to have the workshop. And if an argument can be made to convince us otherwise, then maybe it stays. But I, I don't really care to see personally, this is just for me, I, I can use logic to pretty much understand the capabilities of what that software would provide. What I want to know is how our staff is going to put those capabilities to work to not only pay for that service, but get something additional out of it. And without a clear vision as to how that's gonna be used, I mean, there's an old analogy that a basketball's a basketball until you put it in Michael Jordan's hands. Same thing with this software, it's, the software is just software until you put it in someone's hands who knows what they're doing with it. And it could be flashy and you could show data points here and there that would be, I guess, eye-opening. But, you know, I, I, I think we also have enough data currently available to us to where a lot of those arguments or a lot of those points could still be made without a software to do that for us. And if I could see some traction with the available data, that the tools that are already available to us and the information that is already available, that we are moving forward in the right direction, then yeah, give, give more tools towards that effort and you accelerate the progress. But for me, it's not there yet.
I think, um, I think what I'll do is I'll leave it in the budget. And then if y'all want me to take it out of the budget, I'll take it out, uh, at a second read. Now, if you, like I said, it even, even if it's in there, it takes the mon, the dollar out, which might be what y'all want. But it also is no, if it's in there, there's no guarantee we're gonna do it. So, um, I'm fine, I can take it out now and put it back in if y'all change your mind. Or I can wait till after the, the presentation and, and if say, yeah, we still don't want it in there, then take it out then. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm fine on that. I don't have, I don't, I don't have a problem either way. So, um, I think it makes sense to leave it in there until we watch it. And then if say, yeah, just go ahead and take it out, I'll take it out then, if that's, if that's good with the board. Or if y'all want me to take it out, I'll go ahead and take it out.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, just add, like, at the end of the day, I get it, it's fifteen thousand dollars. When we're talking about a budget the size that the city's working with, it seems a little, I don't want to say irrelevant, but it's not the biggest amount of money. But fifteen thousand dollars, when you think about the condition of our playground currently, fifteen thousand dollars, we go a long way with that. You talk about putting in a, a, filling a new role, fifteen thousand dollars covers a large percentage of, of that salary. When you're working with, the majority of the budget is set in stone, it can't be played with, right? So what you can move around, fifteen thousand dollars all of a sudden is adequate, is an adequate amount of money or is a substantial amount of money that can be, that can be played with. So I just want to make sure that we're spending all, every dollar, regardless of how big or small it is, in the right way. And if we can be convinced and we can convince citizens that it's a positive, uh, allocation of funds, that we're gonna get something out of it, then, then sure. But I think in step one- But I think in step one is convincing the five of us as a whole. And I'm not sure that the five of us are there. So convincing the other 10,000 individuals that live in this city is going to be a challenge.
So the presentation is on, uh, May 29th before the town hall meeting. Are the ones who, um, are championing this, are they going to be there that night to also give us their ideas on how it will benefit?
I'll see if I can get something put together on that and then I'll get a, a feel from y'all and I can have it adjusted before the fifth meeting either way.
Well, because if we, if we hear the presentation on the 29th, that's before our second reading. But also if the ones who are really wanting to see this happen, come that night and give us their ideas of what, how it will benefit our community could be at this town hall or before the town hall meeting as well, then I think we can listen to the presentation, listen to their ideas and then make a decision before the second reading. Does that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and also know that I can take even an adjustment, y'all can say in your motion, we accept, we accept the budget with this condition. And so, so, you know, it's, it can be, you, you know, how you, how you do in the, in the planning commission. So, you know, it's not like, it's not like if it's, if it's, if the number's there, I can take it out before I send it to the controller. So we, we've got some time. Is there anything else I need to be looking at adjustments wise on the budget? That you'd like to see changed?
No, but I would like to say thank you for being flexible with all of the discussion that we've had on the topic. So appreciate it.
I, I thank y'all for, for your input and, and, um, and the willingness to give your input. It's, it's easy to, it's easy to get, um, it's easier to find a solution when you, when you have problems put out there and you say, oh, you know, it's, 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 it's hard to be a mind reader, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, Tom, we'll keep you from being a mind reader and tell you everything that we think. Thank you. And, and thank you for being responsive and appreciate it.
And you know, it's just nice for the citizens to know that, um, prior to you, it was recommended that we go pretty far above revenue neutral. And for us to bring the, the tax rate back down, as Vice Mayor McDonald was speaking of, taking that tax rate back down to revenue neutral is actually in fact lowering. So for you to be able to put together a budget and you and Ben worked so hard to make sure that we stay in the black while lowering back down to revenue neutral, I mean, that, that's real important for our citizens to know that. And, you know, when I, uh, when I read things on social media, um, you know, social media can be a blessing and can be a curse. I just want people to know that before they say something, they need to get the facts. Because there's nothing more hurtful to the five of us and our staff who work so hard every day to take care of this community, to have someone saying something that's inaccurate and getting this, you know, everyone who reads social media in an uproar when it may not be the fa, it, a lot of times it's not the facts. I'd rather, everyone has my phone number, call me and, or, I'm, I'm not speaking for the rest of our board, but I know that they're welcome to hear from you as well. And so's our, our city manager and city staff, if you want to find out the facts before listening to some garbage on social media that's not true. So.
Well, with that, do we want to entertain a motion? Yeah? I see some nods. Okay. And I'll, I'll do it.
All right.
All right. Uh, uh, motion to approve, uh, ordinance 202509.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? We do have a second reading on this. Okay. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 11C passes 5-0. Item 11D, discussion, city staff and elected officials, service day, Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, and, um, and thank you to everybody who is, um, who, who is going to listen to this. Real quick, I'm, actually I drafted something. I'm just trying to pull it up real quick. Here, I've got it here. I just want to read a little something and this is a proposal that I thought of, um, the other day. And, and really this is a discussion. I don't have, um, any sort of concrete agenda on this. But I added this discussion topic because service is at the heart of what all of us in the city, staff, administration and elected officials do. If we were all to be polled and asked what gives us purpose in the work, a popular answer would be service to others. I'm bringing for discussion two questions. Has there been a dedicated time in Fairview history that promotes service? And if so, what did that look like? And if there weren't appetite for this, then how could it potentially look? I did some research to help illustrate what I mean. The idea is to promote service in the city and to engage our neighbors in something that confers a benefit to a location, group, organization or the like. It could be a single day. It could be a week of scheduled activities or it could be a holiday based project or something else entirely that I didn't think of or find in my research. Examples of service initiatives that I did find include roadside cleanups, volunteering at a mobile food pantry and tree planting. I don't raise this with a specific agenda except to discuss how we in the city government can outwardly show our hearts for service, dedication to the people of Fairview and desire to partner with them to make the city an even more beautiful place to live. That's all I had to say. Now I'd like to discuss, if you don't mind.
I might say this, we are a tree city.
We are a tree city.
So tree planting would be a good idea.
I agree. Um, I think, uh, Mayor, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Um, I, I think Commissioner Hall, years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, used to have a program similar to this where everyone would get some vests and go out and clean up the city, correct? I think one of our former commissioners organized that.
It was, I participated, but it was actually Dan Cubix that, uh, organized, uh, beautification of Fairview. And it would be, um, several areas that would be cleaned up. And unfortunately, sometimes it wasn't anybody to haul away the garbage bags. And so I participated sometime and, um, uh, another employee in Public Works come along sometime. He was one I could get in touch with one, one Saturday afternoon. But I made sure that we always had it picked up. But, uh, it was the cloverleaf, why won't we, now 100 and, you know, you could actually choose another road, Chester Road one, one time and so forth. So it's, it was a beautification, uh, type thing for Fairview.
Yeah. I, I, I think that, that's a, that's a great idea to designate a specific time and place and, and, and make it an annual thing as well. And I, I applaud you for bringing that up and thank you very much. And I know that the high school does, you know, their annual cleanup day and, you know, we've participated. I've participated in it. Some former commissioners have participated in it. And, uh, I, I think we should lead by example. So thank you very much, Commissioner Roberts.
Well, thank you. And, and actually, it can look a lot of different ways. I think it's easy to start going towards, uh, trash pickup and, and tree planting. And those were the examples I gave, but what actually inspired it was the, um, Memorial Day flag planting at cemeteries that, um, Tara Bowman Kelly is putting together. And she put it on social media. People could sign up to put flags on veterans' graves. Thought, well, this is a really great way to get involved, a great way to show gratitude and recognition of what other people have done. So it can look a lot of different ways. You could, we could howl for different things, but, um, I thought it would be nice if people in the city did it. And I, and I don't say mandating everybody to, um, to have to do it. But, um, I just wanted to kind of ask the histories. It's good to know that there is some history. And I know that during COVID, there were a lot of people that got out there and spent their time. Stacy Greathouse was on Fairview Tennessee then and now all the time posting about trash pickup. And I did some in my neighborhood with people from church and it's just, it's a great way to really get out there and get involved to get to know people, um, kind of to the point that you were making, Mayor Anderson. When people don't know us, they can get on social media and say all sorts of things about us. But I think if they get into spaces with us and they realize what really energizes and drives us, the five of us are sitting up here because we care. If you were out there planting trees with me, putting flags on veterans' graves with me, it might be easier to understand what drives us and the fact that, you know, we're not just, um, just people making decisions. Uh, we, we really do have a lot of good motives and we really want to help.
I think a good idea would be, um, you know, in the past, like, uh, Commissioner Hall stated, you know, it was about once every, twice a year, three times a year, um, up at Apex Bank, we, they'd set up a table and they'd have the, the grabbers in the vests and we'd go out and pick up trash. I mean, all over the city and there was a police officer that would, you know, uh, make sure everybody was safe. And then, uh, we, you know, bag it up, leave the bag and then somebody would come along with a pickup truck and take it down to the recycle center. And then also the Hudgens Cemetery out off of, uh, King Road, I believe it is. Putting the flags at Memorial Day. So I think what a good idea would be is if, um, someone, uh, would come up with a list of all the different opportunities and then, um, you know, like, we could all pick and choose, you know, something or several or whatever, you know. I think, I think as a whole, you know, we all serve, we're all, all the city employees, all of us, we and the planning commission, we are in service every, you know, every, every day to the community. But, uh, coming alongside the community, you know, mem, uh, you know, our citizens and doing different things just helps them, you know, have a time to be able to, you know, serve with us. But I think a list of the different opportunities would probably be a good idea.
Yeah. And, and, and just to jump on something you said too, you mentioned Hudgens Cemetery. And as of this morning, that was still the cemetery that needed a volunteer to put out flags Memorial Day weekend for, um, veterans. So if anybody wants to sign up for that, then that was still available this morning. But yes, a list. Yeah.
What about Jane Jones Cemetery?
About who?
Jane Jones Cemetery. Have you heard anything about that one?
Yes, somebody has that one. She, she posted a whole list of cemeteries and, um, people were adding a lot of information, but Hudgens was still available this morning.
I have six relatives in Jane Jones. It's veterans.
It's a nice legacy of service. Yeah.
And believe it or not, um, I live in Kyle's Creek and we have our own cemetery and it's all Civil War, uh, veterans. It's a little scary, but, um, you know, but it's, uh, it, you know, it, it's, um, right. I can't believe we have cemeteries like right in our neighborhoods, but we have our own. So that's kind of, that's kind of neat too.
Tom, were you going to say something? I think you were going to volunteer to pull together the list, weren't you?
I was going to volunteer to be devil's advocate. Just, just don't get mad at me if I say, hey, I need to call the insurance company or, or, you know, I need to see what our liability is or, or I need to, I need to check with our city attorney and see if we have any legal ramifications. But I, I'm all for any, any service anybody does for this community. And, you know, I, I think it is good to go shoulder to shoulder with folks and, and, uh, and, uh, be, it, it, it creates unity and it also brings people together. But, uh, also, I want to look at, look at the, I don't want to hurt the city either.
Okay. So I want to put this out. I, I do have to add, you know, that's a good point. Because I do have to add, when we went out and picked up trash, we had to sign, it was a, a form. We had to sign a waiver.
Well, I'm so glad you mentioned that because being a, a trained attorney, which I don't practice, so nothing's ever legal advice up here. But, um, I already thought about that and I figured when I mentioned picking up, uh, trash on the side of the road, there's probably already comments on social media about what a bad idea that is, um, to go on the side of the road. But I thought, well, we'll clear everything that we, that we suggest with our city attorney and make sure that if there's any liability, we've got that cleared up. And we can, um, think about safety measures in advance. But if it's something that is seen as like a citywide day of service. And really thank you all so much for this great conversation and the support. I was a little, little nervous to bring it up, um, just for fear that it wouldn't be understood. But I think it's, it's just really encouraging and thank you. But we can definitely vet it, maybe do a resolution, um, and partner with local organizations too.
Like the city of Columbia just passed, uh, I think Columbia Volunteer Week. Other, other cities do this where they, where they, um, partner and encourage, they reach out into schools and churches and different, you know, Kiwanis or Rotary or whatever. And, and, um, they kind of provide, you encourage and provide, uh, the, the, you know, them to volunteer and organize the activities, whether it's trash cleanup or putting flowers at the cemetery or painting the playground equipment at a school where it looks shabby or putting mulch around, around a swing set or, or, you know, things like that. Cleaning windows at, um, at someone's house that, that can't do it or, or whatever it is. So I think to your point, um, Commissioner Roberts, a, a resolution where the, where the city promotes it as, you know, citywide volunteer week or month or, or whatever, uh, with some planning of, of reaching out, um, and, and having specific activities that occur and then making it an annual event. Mr. Buffalini, I think you mentioned, uh, I think that's an excellent idea and something that citizens then could count on each week and people get excited about that.
Thank you.
And a list?
A list, yes, yes.
And, you know, boys, the, uh, Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, they have badges that they have, you know, they, they can get from doing service. So that's one thing. And then also the service hours for the students at the high school. I mean, so we can really kind of incorporate all of that and make it, you know, where it, it totally encompasses all the needs.
I mean, there should be a list that's maintained here at City Hall. So when new residents move in or it's put in their new resident packet, I don't know if Fairview does that, but some cities do that, of organizations that are, are volunteer type organizations that do good. And there should be something maintained. The city's probably an appropriate place to do it. I think Murray County does it. I think Williamson County does it, uh, and, and maintains a list. So someone, probably someone with the city should maintain it for the city. And when people ask, how do we, how do I get involved? Well, here's a list of, you know, organizations that do different, you know, whether it's Friends of Bowie or the library, library, Friends of the Library or, you know, whatever the organization is. I think that would be a worthwhile project to, to put that together.
Thank you. I'm happy to do some behind the scenes work on this and get it, uh, somewhat organized and work with the city manager and staff.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I think getting citizens involved as well, um, you know, you, you can come together and, and, and put a lot of ideas together and then formulate, you know, a lot of, like say if you wanted to have signups, we could, you know, this could be a central place, people come. Or you, different, there's just a multitude of different ways to, it's, it's endless.
Yeah. This is great. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate this conversation.
Okay. So we'll move on to 11E. Do we have, uh, like a resolution number that I can, because I'm just showing subdivision development agreement. Do we have?
It's in your packet.
Sorry. Okay. I appreciate that. I was just giving my note. Yeah. There we go. Thank you. Okay. So item 11E is resolution 2825, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision agreement between, let's see, it's, uh, contract for Hatcher Heights subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Hatcher Heights subdivision is going to consist of 29 residential lots, uh, and it will be consistent of a $424,551 uh, reclamation bond and then a $1,522,535 performance bond.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
I guess just for both of them, is there, what was the late ad reasoning?
Got a little busy last 15 days with some, a lot of residential building permits coming in and I'd, I had promised, you know, some dates to be added. And so Mayor was very gracious in, in adding these to keep the, the schedule going. That's all.
Thank you.
Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11E passes 5-0. Item 11F. Resolution 29-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision development agreement, contract for Timberbrook subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Timberbrook sub-, Timberbrook subdivision is going to consist of 79 residential lots and it will require a site reclamation bond in the amount of $946,402. And then prior to the recording of the final plat, a site performance bond in the amount of $2,285,061.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11F passes 5-0. Item 12, Roundtable Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Uh, first off, I just want to thank our city employees and Tom and Rachel and everybody that's in here this afternoon, uh, for all the efforts that they've gone through, um, for the budget. Ben's back there and Ethan's over there. So I hope, and Bree and, um, Keith are in the back. So I hope I'm not leaving out anybody, but I want to thank everybody for their hard work on the budget. First off, and next thing, I want to thank the board for how well they presented themselves tonight and good questions that y'all asked on it. So anyway, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor, Board, and thank you to the city staff and everybody who's, uh, been listening in person and at home. Uh, just a couple of, of quick little shout outs to give. Uh, recently the Fairview High School Sound of Gold received first place in a rating of superior on Pigeon Forge. Um, and the high school orchestra, middle school band and orchestra also placed in their categories as well. So representing Fairview very well at a very large level. We're really proud of these kids and the amount of work that they put into it and that their instructors put into it and all the parents. It's just huge. So wanted to give them a shout out for sure. Um, the theater is getting recognized this weekend at T-PAC with the Spotlight Awards. It's just such a big deal, um, that they're, that they've received so many nominations and the programs in both the middle school and the high school are just phenomenal. Um, so make sure you get your tickets for next year. And there are some summer programs coming up at the high school in June that are worth seeing as well. Um, and then finally, I just want to say, because I don't think we'll meet again before graduation, congratulations to all of our 2025 graduates in the high school and in college. And then also congratulations to all the students being promoted and moving up into, um, first grade and sixth grade and eighth, ninth grade. And, um, just hope everyone has a really great summer.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. I'm going to try and keep it short and sweet so we save money so we can add employees to our, to our annual budget. Uh, one, I appreciate the city staff for looking into trying to find additional funding for that. And so I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Um, to some of the people that spoke during Citizens Comments, uh, Andrew Mitchell, thank you very much and, uh, I want to thank you for your service. Um, congrats to your daughter on making varsity cheer. Uh, that's something that's dear to my heart. Uh, and thank you for choosing Fairview to, to live in and grow your family and, and offer to, uh, volunteer for services here in Fairview. Uh, thank you to Ray Goodwin. Um, I love your passion. Thank you. We've listened to you speak several times, so I want to appreciate that. Um, and definitely thanks to the Friends of Bowie who continuously get up and, and voice their concerns for a lot of things. And, and we, we hear you. We're going to listen to you. We're going to do the best that we can to assist with anything that we can. And, uh, Tom's going to work on getting those appr-, uh, appraisals for the bridge. Um, thank you. Um, also, I, I wanted to say thank you very much to Goldstein Insurance and Fairview Nutrition because they raised $2,200 for Shop With A Cop. So I just wanted to thank them very much. Uh, and congratulations to the class of 2025 graduates that are going, some to the military, some to colleges, some going to workforce. So we appreciate each and every one of you. Um, and then something else that I had commented on, I made a proposal a couple of meetings back about a, uh, the out parcel. So I just wanted to give a little bit of an update of what I've been through and working on. Uh, I had a meeting with the state of Tennessee and I found out that we would be eligible for a 50-50 match grant up to $3.5 million. Here's the kicker. Because it, the out parcel is owned by the city and it's not being used for anything recreational right now, we would actually be able to use the land as our match. So just putting that out there, I haven't gone through anything going forward. Uh, this is a, a board decision. So this is something that, that, that's very, uh, very promising. Uh, but it could be used for not just that, but it could be used for other things as well. It could be used for trails through Bowie or, or trails through that, that out parcel or, or anything really. So just to keep that in mind, that, that property can be used as, uh, as our match. So we wouldn't have to put anything into it. Um, and that's just from the state of Tennessee. Um, so I, I just want to leave it at that right now. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just first thank you to the, to the members of this board for having pretty good discussion on the budget and everybody bringing thoughtful questions and can tell that everybody has put, uh, a good amount of effort into, in consideration into the whole thing. Tom, commend you for handling the whole situation well. I know you, you guys, you and staff and all the department heads put a lot of time and effort into getting that there and then we get to just beat it like a pinata. So, uh, appreciate you guys handling that the way you did. Uh, a couple of the comments that were made by one of, during the citizen comments, um, I just wanted to address, there was a request for us to lean on development to get more infrastructure contributions. And I just want to reiterate that we do, in my opinion, do a pretty good job of that. Um, when traffic studies warrant improvement, they are required to add those. Um, I think it's safe to say that there's even some improvements that we ask of them that aren't necessarily warranted. Um, and, and that's not just roads with turn lanes and things like that. But infrastructure, um, as far as Dixon Water Authority does the same thing when they need, um, sewer lines and water lines and, and that sort of thing run, they're, they, they put the money in to, to help with that, especially the bigger ones. Um, the same thing with the drainage. Um, I think it was mentioned that we should go above the minimum requirement. The City of Fairview, in our regulations, goes above the minimum requirement the state of Tennessee requires. Um, so we are doing that. Um, there are legal limitations to, to what you can do. Uh, you can't just go above what's on paper. Uh, you have to, you can only enforce what's in place. But the City of Fairview does have regulations in place that does go above and beyond what the city, what the state of Tennessee requests. Um, but yeah, congratulations to the band. That's amazing. Didn't hear that. I, I'm already looking forward to Burt Hester's initial introduction of the Sound of Gold come football season, knowing that they're having that level of success. So, um, congrats to them and congrats to all the graduates. It's big. I know we were all in those shoes at one point in our lives, some of us longer than, longer, longer ago than others. But, um, it's always an exciting time for, for everybody that's around them, whether it's parents, grandparents, friends. It's, uh, pretty entertaining. Even my youngest just had her preschool graduation today and,
Oh, man.
I know it's not necessarily the biggest milestone, but as a parent and, and anybody who's out there that's a parent, they, it, it's, it's pretty crazy. So that's all.
Okay. So I'm going to piggyback off of, uh, the, uh, questions, uh, by Ms. Goodman. The kids, when they're in the halls at the high school, they choose to be, they're not out there because they're, they're overcrowded. I've had discussion with, uh, um, our Superintendent of Schools and he claims that our schools are not overcrowded. Matter of fact, they're only at 70%.
Mayor.
So.
Can I have just one moment? Sorry. This goes right along with what you're saying.
Okay.
I just wanted to put out the information. Williamson County puts out a strategic plan every year. Uh, they have a five-year capital plan. They also put out the enrollment numbers for each school that lists how many students are enrolled, what the capacity of each school. Fairview Elementary, uh, right now at a enrollment is at 66%.
Yep.
Westwood Elementary is at 66.5%.
That's right.
Fairview Middle School is at 70.5%.
That's right.
And Fairview High School is at 67.5%.
That's right.
So whenever, um, you know, Williamson County Schools is tracking this very, very closely. Uh, they pull numbers directly from my system out of our office. We meet with them. Uh, they also get to see, uh, the Williamson County Educational Impact Fee from all the new development. Those fees go directly towards, uh, new schools to be built. In fact, in their five-year capital plan, they have an elementary school west located within Fairview. Projected completion date is fall of 2029 with a total amount that they're expecting to spend of $60 million uh, for an additional elementary school and serving the Fairview area. So just some statistical numbers behind what you were.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for, for, um, you know, taking my comments and actually putting data to it. Because when I speak with Jason Golden every month at our different meetings across town, he, he assures me that we are not overcrowded and you just put the data to it. So I want the facts. I'm all about getting the facts out there so our community knows what the facts are. Fact, um, we have a stormwater ordinance, which we strictly follow. So, uh, people are not just, you know, willy-nilly, um, dumping water into neighbors without our stormwater ordinance and these, uh, you know, we have a lot, we have, we have some issues, but those neighborhoods were built, you know, a while back when we didn't have a stormwater ordinance, but we do now. And we actually adopted that before we were required to. And back to the kids in the hall. So when the kids are in the hall, um, I've, I go into the high school and they choose to eat their lunch in the hall. And you'll see kids, you know, during different lunchtimes, they'll be lined up in the hall and, and that's their time to socialize, visit and eat their lunch. So that's why, you know, if the kids are saying that they're in the hall, it's because that's a designated time that they like to do that. Um, Ethan, I would like for you to, I, I appreciate the program you've put together so our community can see the different developments through town. You worked very hard on that. I appreciate you, um, listening to the commissioners and putting that together for our community. And I'd like for you to, to talk about that right now.
Before I do that, just want to say, Keith, I don't know where, whatever camera we're on, uh, happy birthday to my daughter. She is five today.
Happy birthday.
That is my eldest child. And then if you can put click share on, please. She, I told her she could stay up late tonight. So she's probably still.
Oh, man, we're keeping you here. Or I'm keeping you here. I'm sorry.
Uh, I have, I've made sure I made a note of it. Yeah, she's five. She's in, going to kindergarten now. She gets to stay up late. Um, on the City of Fairview's website, under our resources tab, we have our city maps. If you click there, takes you over to our City of Fairview maps. You click the Fairview Zoning Mac, Map Public, it will take you into our mapping system. On here, you can see all the different zones. Uh, there's a legend on the left. You can click on any property and see exactly what it is zoned and who owns it. Uh, this has been public for a while. Over on the left, we have our Layers tab and there is now a public layer that you can add into the map that is listed as the New Residential Development Overlay. When you click Add, it will pull up, it appears best if you go to Blending and go down to Darken, Multiply. Once you are there, you can close out all those boxes. And this will show you, um, all the approved developments that have vested rights currently within the City of Fairview that are, uh, out on our new residential development list that we put out monthly. You can zoom in and see what each of these new developments will look like. Uh, City Center is on here, Bowie Meadows, Cedar Crest, Rich Bell, all the way throughout the entire city of every development. So if you see something going up, you're able to log on to here and you see trees coming down, you can pull it up and see exactly what's going on behind your house in your neck of the woods or around town. Is fairly clear. Um, one thing to note, the lines on this map are not 100% accurate. Do not use this as a general survey of the property. There are, um, you know, human error involved in this and there, it's a mapping software that is as good as the input. And so do not rely on it 100%, but it does give you a very decent general idea of where the new developments are. If you are interested in one particular development, you can open the group layer. You can scroll down through all of the developments. Say you're interested in Goodwin Farms. You can click on the three dots and zoom directly to the layer,
So nice.
which takes you right to that project and you can see what's going on. Um, as we get new developments that come in, we will add them into the system so that everyone is aware and has the same ability to go in and look at it. Commissioner Buffalini, thanks for the idea. Um, as I told you before, sometimes it just takes a fresh pair of eyes. We've had a, a similar, you know, map in our office where we, we track these developments and know where things are. But this puts it out to the public and lets everybody have a, kind of a bird's eye view of what's going on in town. So. Uh, Vice Mayor McDonald, you had also asked prior to the meeting about a TPUDC update. Due to the, uh, we've had several conversations with other communities and have continued to make additions and subtractions out of that document. I expect it to be back to us during the month of June, uh, with a public draft. There have been, uh, as recently as this week, uh, having different things added and removed based on having some conversations with other communities who have, uh, worked through some of their issues with their ordinance that they've had. So trying to make sure we have the cleanest document coming forward so that the public is as informed as possible without having a whole lot of things that are going to change on the backend.
And I appreciate you reaching out to the other communities who already have done this because I know that, um, I've heard big numbers, um, of revisions that they've had to do. So if we can take, you know, their situation and. So if we can take, you know, their situation and use it to our advantage to clean that up beforehand, then that will save our community money. So I appreciate that. And this is, this is great, I mean, and if anyone out there forgets how to use this, just re-watch this meeting over and over, and you'll know how to use it.
We will be putting out a
Tutorial?
Tutorial ad.
Oh, good.
Richard will be doing that through social media.
I'm kind of a visual person, so I like to hear you explain it. So anyway, thank you so much for doing that, that's going to benefit our community a lot and answer a lot of questions. Several of us were, or we were invited to the elementary school for their community meeting last Friday, and several of us attended that. Ms. Chambers Woods came out to our around-town coffee this past Wednesday, or actually yesterday morning, and spoke to us about some needs of, like, the schools and some ways we can get involved. One thing she brought up was being a page-turner, where if you would like to go and spend some time with these amazing children and read with them, there is a way, I actually, you know, back in the day, I'm one of the older members up here, and back in the day, you know, before 9/11, we could just walk into the school and say, hey, I want to read with students today, and they'd give us a student, and we'd read and have a great time, and we can't do that anymore. And we've got to, you know, consider safety and stuff like that. So there is a form that can be filled out, we have them here at City Hall. If you would like to get your Tier 3, it's a background check and some information about you, and that way, if you'd like to volunteer at the schools, you can do that with your Tier 3, and just know that the application is here, and you can fill that out, and if you want to volunteer at the schools, that's a way to do it. There's many different things that they need, but reading to the students, I remember back in the day when I did that, it is just really something they could, they could use. So I appreciate Ms. Chambers Woods coming and talking to us, and her passion, she is administration at Fairview Elementary School, and her passion for the children and making sure that they have a bright path to their future, I can tell that it's on her heart, and she spoke to us, and it was just eye-opening to me. Going to that, that community meeting and seeing how Fairview Elementary School interacts with their students and just engages them, and how they care about them and want what's best for their future, it was just, it was really exciting to see. And the students, I can tell how this just makes them all feel like they have, you know, a lot of support when they're at school and away from their parents, so I appreciate that. Remember that Town Hall is May 29th from 7:00 to 9:00, so that's a time that you can come. We can't dialogue during our Board of Commissioner meetings, the way they're set up, but our Town Halls happen on a month where there's a fifth Thursday, this month happens to be one, so we'd like to see as many people as can come out to our Town Hall and ask your questions, and we can, you know, answer them, and if we can't, we will get the answer for you. So as I always say, also, I did want to mention, high school graduation is on the football field at 7:00 PM a week from tomorrow, and I'm just excited for all of our seniors, and, you know, if they're going to college, or if they're doing technical, or whatever their future brings, I just, you know, pray for them a very prosperous future and a happy graduation. So with that, yes? Why don't you? Yeah.
Okay, since the mayor was discussing Fairview Elementary, there's something else that they did that's very special for Fairview community. They're one of the recipients to the state of Tennessee for the Purple Star, and only three, I believe it's three schools in the state of Tennessee?
Yes.
Three schools in the state of Tennessee receive this award, and Fairview Elementary is one of those three schools in the state of Tennessee to win this award. This award goes to the support for veterans, so I just wanted to point that out, so thank you.
And Mr. Mitchell, I appreciate hearing a little bit about you, and appreciate your service to our country. So as I always say, let's, you know, pick up trash and not throw it out, and keep Fairview beautiful. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.